Okay, we're gonna open the Tuesday, February 20th, 2018 Board of Selectment meeting at 6:30. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We don't have any resident comments, so I'll read the warrants. Motion to approve payroll warrant number 18-33 in the amount of $136,799.46.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion to approve bill warrant number 18-33 in the amount of $606,606.11.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Breakdown.
$404,000 of that is the light department, $18,000 is water and sewer, $23,000 is withholding, $43,000 is health insurance, $7,300 is snow and ice, and $109,000 is town bills.
Could you just do a quick breakdown on the electric company, $400,000?
I'd have to pull all the bills to tell you. They pay all their monthly vendors, their electric usage. Their supplier, I meant to say.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Alright, next up, we have appointments. Appointment of Kathy Greeney, who's unenrolled, 502 Diane Circle-Groveland to the Board of Registars to fill a vacancy through June 30th, 2019. Can you go up to the podium, please? It'll be painless, I promise.
You won't feel a thing.
You won't feel a thing.
Neither will we.
Anybody have any questions for Kathy?
Not really. Not seen that you walked in with him, so I really don't have a problem. If you're associated with him, you're good to go.
That's my son.
I know, I figured that out. I'm like, you know, now I get it.
Now you get it, right?
Now you get it.
Yeah.
You brought out the big guns tonight, right?
I did.
You did. Ed, anything?
No, I did until you come in with a bodyguard.
Everywhere I go. If I don't have him, I've got the little one, so.
Bill, anything?
Thanks for stepping up.
No.
It'll be fun.
He speaks a lot of volumes for me, too, so, um, yeah.
We just want people to vote. I mean, people need to get out.
Yeah.
You know, that's important.
I agree.
Can you do that?
I always.
Light a fire under their rear ends and get them off the couch and get them to vote?
We need to be busy at the polls.
People, yeah, people should take advantage. I had four uncles run after each other at Normandy Beach in order to give us these rights, and so few people exercise them.
That's right.
Considering all the blood that was shed over all the years.
Yeah.
It's amazing.
Yeah.
Denise?
Yeah, so this is just, you'll see when you get into votes, we had a resignation, so that's what created the position for Kathy. So you will vote a little later on to accept the resignation of our outgoing registrar, just to clarify.
Okay. Thank you for stepping up. Someone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept Kathy Greeney to the registrars to fill the vacancy through June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Second. Did all those in favor?
Yes.
See at the polls.
See? Painless, right?
Painless, we like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, discussion and possible vote. We have the statement on the Fire Chief. I will read that. "On February 12th, 2018, Fire Chief Robert Lay and the Board of Selectmen executed an employment settlement agreement whereby Chief Lay agreed to resign his employment effective on March 30th, 2018. Between now and March 30th, Chief Lay will continue on a paid leave status as the board voted on January 18th, 2018. The terms of Chief Lay's administrative leave shall remain unchanged during this additional leave period." Okay, next up, we have a discussion on recreational marijuana moratorium. So Denise, we have to vote to put a moratorium on recreational?
Yes, so as we talked about briefly at the last meeting, as of April 1st, recreational marijuana becomes legal in Massachusetts. Those communities that wanted to put a bylaw prohibiting such had to do so prior to that in order to stop any applications from being taken out in the community. We have not had anyone approach us thus far to apply for a recreational marijuana permit, so we still have time to place this moratorium. I don't think we're ready for a bylaw for the annual town meeting, because there is quite a bit to putting in a bylaw, but we can put this temporary moratorium. The state will allow it as long as it passes town meeting through December 31st of this year. And then we will likely have a fall special town meeting for the high school project at which we could add on a permanent bylaw of whatever direction the board chooses when it comes to recreational marijuana. So this is language that was put out by our council last August as a town meeting article and a bylaw. So I did speak to the chairman of the planning board. Zoning bylaws require the planning board's approval. They are in support. Once this board approves it, they will take it. They have to hold a public hearing and notify the necessary parties to make a bylaw change, but they will proceed and have that in place and all of their requirements met by the annual town meeting.
So this is in effect from April 1st till December 31st?
So technically, this is in effect on the date of town meeting if it's voted. So we would still be susceptible if someone came in to apply between April 1st and April 29th.
Yeah.
But again, there's a process to do so, and anyone who was likely to do that would have already approached us, and to date, we have not had anyone approach us. If it's passed on April 30th, it still requires Attorney General approval, but when they approve it, it could take several months. It will be retroactive to the date of town meeting. So if they don't approve it until July, it still becomes effective as of April 30th.
Okay. Any questions? Bill? Ed, any questions? Bill, any questions?
Quick question on the section 7.5.2 definition. The term marijuana cultivator, would that include also medical cannabis? It seems very vague.
We could certainly tighten that up. It should not, because it identifies recreational marijuana establishment.
Because that could be a cultivator for medical only, independent of everything else.
Right, I mean, you could certainly into each one of those add recreational. You know, same thing you could say with testing laboratory, and so we could certainly add recreational before all of those if you wanted to.
Much clearer to find.
I agree.
The definition and what we're trying to exclude.
So is that something that we can make changes tonight and vote on?
Yep. Yeah, if that's, yep, we can do that.
Anything else in there, Bill?
No, I read it pretty extensively. I had a lot of time to look over these.
So if I may just, so that section would read, definition, recreational marijuana establishment shall mean a recreational marijuana cultivator, independent recreational testing laboratory, recreational marijuana product manufacturer, recreational marijuana retailer, or any other type of licensed recreational marijuana-related business.
Yes.
Doesn't it, in the beginning, doesn't it kind of spell it out when it says recreational marijuana establishment, though? You think it's under that category, right?
It does, but I think it leaves enough room for vagueness to be.
That's fine.
To be interpreted more than one way.
Alright, so we need to make a motion on this.
And make a motion that we include the word recreational before the aforementioned items in section 7.5.2, the definition clause.
Alright, is your motion to accept it with those changes, or you're just making a motion to amend as you identified?
To amend as identified, I guess. Is that what I wanna do?
So we're gonna do a motion to amend first?
You're gonna amend, and then you're gonna make a motion to approve it? Or you wanna do a motion to approve as amended?
Yeah, that's alright. Yeah, let's do it one step.
Streamline it.
Streamline the process. I'm all for streamlining and making it more efficient.
So it's a motion to amend and then accept? Okay. Can you wait a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Next up, we have discussion of Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 42, 43, 44, the so-called strong chief, strong Fire Chief statute. So, is it last year or the year before that we voted to extend or to enforce a strong chief? When did that come to plan?
No, that was prior to my arrival. So I think 2013, the town accepted that. In 2016, I believe it was on the town meeting warrant to repeal, and it failed.
Failed, right. So I think what's best for the town is that we look at repealing that again. That's my opinion. I think having a strong chief law in effect limits some oversight, limits accountability, limits budget oversight, and I think, I think it's best for the town that this board, whoever it consists of, has oversight on, over most of the town equipment and budget. And that would include trying to repeal this strong chief law. Bill, anything for you?
My question is, what do we not have any say in with the strong chief law? I know the equipment is care and custody of the selectmen right now.
That is what it's supposed to be, but I don't know that we've actually had the ability to enforce that and have care and custody of that equipment. Would you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know what other, what other others. I don't know the pros and cons of what the strong chief and the weak chief, what's the pros and cons? Of it, what would be the?
Would you like me to read the statute?
Sure.
Section 42 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 48. Towns accepting the provisions of this section and Sections 43 and 44, or which have accepted corresponding provisions of earlier laws, may establish a fire department to be under the control of an officer to be known as the chief of the fire department. The chiefs shall be appointed by the selectmen and shall receive such salary as the selectman may from time to time determine, not exceeding in the aggregate the amount annually appropriated therefore. He may be removed for cause by the selectmen at any time after a hearing. He shall have charge of extinguishing fires in the town and the protection of life and property in case of fire. He shall purchase, subject to the approval of the selectmen, and keep and repair all property and apparatus used for and by the fire department. He shall have and exercise all the powers and discharge all the duties conferred or imposed by statute upon engineers and towns except as herein provided. And shall appoint a deputy chief and such officers and firemen as he may think necessary and may remove the same at any time for cause and after a hearing. He shall have full and absolute authority in the administration of the department, shall make all rules and regulations for its operation, shall report to the selectmen from time to time as they may require, and shall annually report to the town and the condition of the department with his recommendations thereon. He shall fix the compensation of the permanent and call members of the fire department, subject to the approval of the selectmen. And the expenditure of money, the chiefs shall be, shall be subject to such further limitations as the town may from time to time prescribe. The appointment of the chief of the fire department in any town or district having a population of 5,000 or less may be for a period of three years. Section 43. The chief of a fire department shall act as forest warden in all such towns which accept the provisions of either the two preceding sections and shall have authority to appoint deputy wardens and fix their compensation subject to the approval of the selectmen. Section 44. The three preceding sections shall not affect the tenure of office nor apply to the removal of permanent and call members of a fire department in towns which have accepted Chapter 31 on corresponding provisions of earlier laws. Said sections shall not apply to cities. That is the strong chief law. This is the so-called weak chief law. Chapter 48, Section 42A. In towns which accept this section or have accepted corresponding provisions of earlier laws, there shall be a fire department established under the direction of the selectmen, who shall appoint a chief of the fire department and such other officers and firemen as they deem necessary, and fix their compensation in an amount not in the aggregate exceeding the annual appropriation therefore. The selectmen may make suitable regulations governing the fire department and the officers and firemen thereof. And in towns which are not subject to Chapter 31, may remove the chief and other officers and firemen at pleasure. The chief of the fire department shall be in immediate control of all town property used by the department and of the officers and firemen who shall obey his orders.
Okay. So what I heard, and the only thing that, that comes to my mind, is the hiring and firing of a strong chief kind of leads it to him.
You mean hiring and firing within the department?
Right, right. So that could, that could end up on bullying. It could end up on favoritism or whatever. Don't know if it happens or whatever. Now, if you go to weak chief, it puts it onto us where we're gonna be having the, possibly to say when that person comes to personnel, if they have a grievance or whatever, the fireperson can come to personnel type thing and talk to personnel, and we'd have more say. I don't wanna go and get into a situation where we're controlling the fire department. That's all I'm saying. So what I just heard, probably I would be in favor maybe to look at the weak chief.
So I would just say, I think the weak chief statute is more like the way the other departments in town operate, even the police department. You know, the fire chief would still make recommendations on appointments to this board, but it's this board's appointments. Yes, if there's personnel matters, it has a process. Currently, everything stops with the fire chief. Disciplinary action, personnel matters, hiring, firing, it stops at the fire department, with the fire chief.
I think, I think in the past, and I don't wanna say too much, but I think in the past, what's happened is there's been a, there's been a dividing line probably because of that strong chief, weak chief type thing, where maybe power on both halves were too strong. I don't know, but there was definitely a breakdown. I mean, I think we need to figure this breakdown out, and I don't think we should probably be in a rush to go and do something tomorrow, but I think we should think about it and do the right thing. And again, if it's gonna go to town meeting.
Well, either way, it'll be a time meeting.
Right.
Fair time, so. Bill?
I'll be honest with you. I, in 2013, I voted for the strong chief law, because based on the composition of the, of the board at the time, there was only three people. It was, to me, pretty clear that, you know, cronyism and nepotism could easily take place, but I think that's just so much more difficult with a five-person board that it doesn't, that, that argument doesn't, just doesn't hold water with me anymore, so I've gotta abandon that. And also, from what I've witnessed in the last six years, the strong chief just doesn't lend itself enough to accountability. There's just a disconnect there that needs to be reestablished. And I think the only way you can do that is by repealing the so-called strong chief law and replacing it again with the weak chief law, so that this board, and boards to follow, have authority over that department, and there's some accountability and responsibility that.
Well, some separation from what may be happening in any department, and maybe some, the ability to separate facts, rumors, hearsay, whatever it may be, and just looking at what may or may not be happening, having some oversight. I think, I think it would be better for the town, the relationship with the departments, putting in, like Denise said, like the way the police do it, other departments do it, where they recommend, recommend appointments, and then we appoint.
Well, like I said, I've done it real, 180, having been experienced.
Actually, I think I voted for that, too.
At the time, it, it made sense to me, but now, having lived through the experience, it no longer makes sense, and I don't think it, it no longer works for the town and the folks of the town. So I think we should recommend that it be repealed as soon as possible, if not yesterday.
Ed, did you have anything?
No, I agree with most of the comments, and I think it's time for a change. Step back, to where we used to be.
Sorry, so whatever we talk about, I mean, this automatically goes to town meeting anyways?
Well, if you as a board wanna put an article on, yes, then it has to go to town meeting.
Okay, so someone wanna make a motion that we make this an article for town meeting? What the people decide?
Slap it at me. How do I, how do I make that motion so it?
So you could make a motion that the Board of Selectmen sponsor an article to repeal Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 42, 43, 44, and replace it with Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 42A.
I like what she said.
Alright, we have a motion. Can we get a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
While we're on the, while we're on the discussion, I don't know if we can talk about it or not, but with the current department now, we have any plans to meet, talk, greet, try to see what's going on over there at all?
Do we have any plans?
Yeah.
To meet with the fire department?
Yeah, to try and, you know.
Yes, yep. We had put out an invitation for, is it next Tuesday night? That myself, Lisa, and Denise would address questions, concerns from the fire department during their training night.
So I heard back from the Assistant Chief today that that is acceptable to him.
So that'll be Tuesday night that we meet?
I think it's a step forward.
And then we'll report back, I guess, to the board to following selectmen meeting. Okay, next up, we have superintendent search committee, board member selection. I will tell the board that I did get an email from Lisa this morning offering to step up and be a search member or be part of the committee on this superintendent search, so unless anybody else has any.
I'd make a motion to volunteer, Miss Selectman Carpenter, for the role of filling the Kentucky Regional School Committee superintendent search, effective immediately. There's a lot.
Okay. Need a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Bill, your side? Okay. All those in favor?
Yes.
Right?
It's like, oh, no.
Go ahead.
My plate was so full, I was just looking back, oh, no, please, somebody volunteer.
Alright, next up, we have fiscal year 2019 budget discussion. I did look through some of this over the weekend. I don't know if anybody had any comments or any place that they wanted to start with any of the information or departments? Start with Ed, your side?
No, I haven't received the water department.
I have not either.
You haven't got that yet either?
I spoke with the superintendent today. He's wrapping it up and hopes to have it to me tomorrow or the day after.
Okay.
Okay.
And Ed, before you leave, I have a, the school budget. I don't think I gave it to you. It came after I made the books.
No, I didn't get that. No, I didn't get that.
Oh, good.
The school budget.
How was that? Is that in PDF? Is it an Excel file that you can send me?
No, I printed, I photocopied their submission, so it's another chapter of your book. I can scan it and send it to you.
It's on a PDF?
No, I have, I was given paper copies of it.
Paper copies of it? You and I both know that wasn't created on a piece of paper, right? It had to be created in an Excel file or some kind of.
I can ask for that. I was not given that, but I can ask for that if you'd like.
Yes, well, we should demand that, because these PDF files, they've been giving it to us for a few years. It's garbage. You can't do anything with it. You can't analyze any data on a PDF. I mean, stop it, really. Come on.
Actually, you can, you can get a program to reconvert it back to Excel, I think. I mean, it's a pain.
If it converts all the numbers correctly.
Yeah, I mean, I've done it. It's a pain. It takes a little work, though.
The work has already been done.
I can ask them.
The work has already been done. Please share it with us, that's all. Come on.
So did you say you were okay for now?
Yeah.
Did you have any questions on the budget?
Yes, I do. Bring that up. It reminds me of a conversation we had about this time last year when we were a little short, and we were looking for money. We were looking at departments that hadn't spent their entire budgets and could give us a little back. And at that time, we found out, much to my chagrin, that there were departments that, yes, they had some money, but they weren't willing to give it back, and they went out and spent every single last dime they had at the last minute. Now, we should know about these folks, and we should pay their budgets back until they become fiscally responsive and act like adults. I think that's fair. This isn't a game anymore. We're looking to plug holes, and they're playing games with the budget. This is this kind of garbage, too, like the PDF. It's gotta end.
So I will just say to that, that last year, not quite this early, but last year during the budget cycle, I did put a spending freeze in place as a result of that. And yes, there were departments after that that chose to continue to spend.
We should know who they are.
We have not put anything in place thus far. Still trying to evaluate what we will need for money and where sort of we're gonna fall. So I have not put a spending freeze in place for fiscal 18 as of yet.
A spending freeze may be one thing. I'd like to know who those departments are so that we can trim back their, their budgets to a more appropriate level, and then maybe they get the idea that, you know, they've gotta be fiscally responsible. This isn't, you know, this isn't monopoly money. It's not their money. That money belongs to all of us. And if they're spending it foolishly, then they ought to be slapped. Not figuratively, not literally, okay? Don't get me wrong. And then shown that this is an adult playground now, no longer the sandbox. I mean, am I wrong here? Am I out of line?
No, I mean, it's, it's real money. We don't make it. We tax it, so.
Well, that's.
Whatever we get taxed, that's what we have. We don't have extra.
Stinking conception with the free cash. I hate that day.
When does that get to the point?
Hope money. You hope you get it. It's not free cash.
We are hoping in the next few weeks.
You see? We're hoping to get the cash.
Yeah, but we didn't get it until very late last year, and we didn't know. So this, this, all this conversation we have early on, really can't edge everything stolen until you have that free cash number and you have all those numbers. You know what I mean?
Right.
We can go through these budgets and, and talk about what Bill's talking about, what have you, but until we get the actual numbers, we really can't knock into it.
Right, and that's why, and that's why the state, as we talked about last meeting, one of their recommendations is that our town meeting is just too early, for a lot of those reasons.
Right, exactly.
We don't have free cash. We don't have the state budget. We don't have health insurance figures. We don't know what our insurance liability rates are. Those are all still unknowns, and we won't get them until sometime in March.
But wouldn't it be great to have an almost balanced budget before that number came down the pike? And then we could use that money, if we got any, for some real useful, purposeful things? Instead of flooding holes in the dyke?
Well, I will say to that, we've had a balanced budget. The only money we've used, free cash for the budget, is to fund the OPEB obligation that you all felt was important.
It had to been done.
We've had a balanced budget with the exception of that. So free cash has been used to pay that OPEB obligation. Otherwise, we balance our budget.
So if we could find another $85,000 before that came down the pike? We're in a better shape.
And that will be difficult.
You know what difficulty is?
Aren't we looking at a deficit for the school budget?
So, I've played.
Preliminary anyways?
Well, the school has proposed some cuts. I have worked with their proposed number and have a preliminary balanced budget based on, again, just my, some of my general recommendations at this point. The finance board is actively meeting with departments, but it could be done with the school number and some cuts throughout departments with their requests.
Departments here?
I thought that that was a pretty sizable number.
Not cutting more cuts to what they've requested.
Oh.
So not cutting where they are today.
So not necessarily the increase they're asking.
But, correct, not necessarily funding all of their requesting.
Because what was that deficit that they were throwing out?
The first one was about $600,000.
What was the second?
$330,000. Uh, three hundred and thirty thousand, I believe, and that meant an additional hundred-ish thousand to each of the three communities.
Right.
I'm not trying to say that I'm, that I always paint the good picture, but we got these numbers early on last year, and as we kept moving forward, it kind of all panned out, and they knew, and they brought their numbers in line and were able to balance the budget. And I know I shouldn't be saying it's gonna happen again, and we shouldn't not plan that way, but we can hope that putting pressure on and what have you, they'll, they'll know what we need to get done, you know what I mean?
Right, well, again, right now, I mean, I could give you a balanced budget without the eighty-five thousand funded by...
Right.
That would still have to come from another method. We don't have that additional fund, those additional funds, but, um...
But also...
We can always do a balanced budget. It just depends on how much you want to cut.
But also, our auditors told us that we really got to start putting that money aside because it's not there.
Correct, but we have been, right.
I know, I know we have been. I'm saying that's why we were doing what we were doing, because we...
It was only there afterwards.
It's an important number that needs to be put away.
Yeah, and I would recommend we still need to.
Right.
And in fact, on my spreadsheet of, um, you know, potential free cash funds, that's still item number one.
Yeah, we shouldn't have our kids pay our bills for us. That's important.
I was looking through, I looked through quite a bit of this, but under Selectman's office, there was an increase of twenty-five percent to the reserve fund.
Yep.
Can you explain that a little bit more?
Yes, so the reserve fund is an account appropriated that the finance board can allow transfers from. So what that means is if there's unexpected deficits, which we've had several last few years, they can appropriate out of that twenty-five thousand, currently twenty thousand, to cover those deficits.
So like an unusually snowy winter with that?
Correct. So we try not to use it because that would take our whole reserve fund for snow and ice issues.
Right.
But we've had some issues where we had fire department vehicle issues. Um, we had the cemetery one year ran short that they weren't expecting. We had a town clerk, um, something ran short in that line. So it's just, it's been twenty thousand dollars for many, many, many years. Um, that was obviously my recommendation is to increase its line just to give a little more cushion to the finance board if there are these deficits that are unexpected.
Do you, historically, do you know, has that been depleted every year with special transfers for...
It has not because we've covered it through special town meeting transfers. So we've covered it by other available funds within the budget.
Okay.
But if we don't have those other available funds...
It'd have to come from here.
So if it's not used, it can't be used for anything else. So it can only be used to cover these deficits or it would just fall to free cash at the end of the year. So it's not like we can then take it and use it for other things.
So it doesn't roll over year to year and grow, use it or...
We have to appropriate it each year.
Okay. I think for now that's all right. It's the only question I had and where I made it through anyways. Anybody else? You all set for now on the budget?
Till I get those, uh, departments, yeah, I'm all set.
The only, the only one that I was saying is, in that we knew it needed to be changed a little bit was the snow and ice budget on the highway? Because every year we come in for ninety and ninety and that, oh, I'm sorry, I shouldn't, you know, up to ninety, whatever. Are they looking at maybe increasing that a little bit?
Yeah, so the finance board is gonna make a recommendation on that. Um, Bob did not request anything. He's gonna leave it to the finance board to really, they've looked back, they've been evaluating the last few years. They will come up with a recommendation to increase that.
Right.
Not unlike what we did last year with the legal, um, budget. We increased that by twenty thousand because at forty thousand of year after year, that's just not enough.
Right.
Um, so they will put together some recommendation on what we can, um, increase that line item to and still be healthy within...
Right. I know the town, we've increased a lot of town roads in, over the years. We're building houses, we're building roads. I mean, his budget's gotta be, gotta be increased a little bit. So hopefully, they, they can see how much it's grown and add that money, because I hate sitting here and having, and I'm not saying anyone's dishonest, but I hate having something come across and then you're saying okay to it, but you don't know where the money's being spent, you know what I mean? And I'm sure it's being spent right. I'm not saying it isn't. But if he had the right amount of money, it wouldn't come that way before, so we wouldn't have to even second guess it.
Right, well, and if you just consider the cost of materials that increases year after year.
Right, exactly.
We haven't increased that budget, correct, and we do pay quite a bit for materials.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So it should, it should increase every few years anyway. It's just to deal with things like that, and it hasn't. It's been static for quite some time.
Well, as long as I've been here.
Yeah.
Well, Bill, Bill's right. We were asking the highway to do a lot more than what they had in the past, and the budget really hasn't, hasn't gone up to reflect that. And I know we get complaints because they're all doing, they're doing other things that, uh, so maybe, maybe an increase in, uh, in the budget, definitely warranted.
Yeah, I will just say on the highway, so one of the requests has changed since he submitted his budget. If you recall, a few years ago, he came before the board and asked for two additional staff members. The board agreed one the first year and one another year. So in his budget request, he did put in a second laborer or an additional laborer. He's since changed that request. He and I have spoken, um, and in the interest of providing better resources throughout the town complex, um, he would like to change that request to technically a part-time position, and the other part-time of that would be from our facilities coordinator. So we would like to hire a full-time junior laborer for the highway department with a CDL license, but they would handle all facilities work, maintain the properties, snowing, cutting grass, and then if needed, they could handle other projects around town with the highway department. Because he recognizes that we desperately need someone here, you know, plowing and cutting grass and things like that during the, those times of year, because he's pulling his guys off the street. So he said that is really, you know, one day a week of someone using that time. So if we could go for a junior laborer to cover all of the facility work and then still be able to cover projects.
Well, before, before we even approve that, we should have a job description of what they're looking for, their duties and responsibilities before it's actually voted on.
That's fine. Again, I just, I mean, things like that, I just don't want to waste my time doing that if the board's not even gonna support it in conference.
One, and you're probably talking the same thing I'm gonna be talking about, but one thing that I know is we got the pavilion. I'm just saying the pavilion. That needs work. It needs paint. We have buildings around here that need paint on the outside and what have you. A facilities person definitely is something the town could use, for sure.
Well, but I'm, I'm speaking about our current custodian, um, that at the number of hours, it's just not enough to do anything other than cleaning a building. We don't have any work doing repairs. Again, it's me dealing with the roofing companies. It's me dealing with the boiler companies. For the money you pay me, you're wasting money with me spending hours with fire alarm companies looking at our services.
I agree that, I agree. I'm going one step further. I'm saying facilities person that would do what you're talking about and would be able to do repair on the buildings and would maybe a little bit step more than the janitor does, you know what I'm trying to say?
Right.
I, I know West Newbury has a full-time facilities person that fixes the buildings, broken doors, broken windows, all that kind of stuff. That's what I think Roland needs.
Oh, I agree, but I've asked for a full-time facilities person. You guys have not approved it the last few years. So this is another approach, is to try and go with a junior laborer that will work half the time under the highway department and half the time at facilities, because we desperately need somebody full-time.
I would definitely like to turn around and say that, what you just said, a junior laborer. But like Ed just said, a job description where they could do that other stuff, you know what I'm saying? I think we, we're in need of it. I do. We have, um, other buildings around town that need work and what have you. You know what I mean? So, I don't know, we can have a more discussion later, but I definitely think we need to morph that into a bigger description.
Okay.
Quick question. Do you know what the, the current budget stands with this snow and ice?
Um, I think with the seventy-two hundred that was just paid, and I went to look, I think we are just at capacity. We had a little room, um, and I think that seventy-two hundred pretty much closed us up.
And to the best of your knowledge, are we still renting that sidewalk cleaner for around twenty-six thousand a year?
We didn't rent it, at least to own, yes.
At least own, okay.
Yes, so that was the winter of twenty fifteen. Um, this is the third year out of five.
Yeah, five. Okay, now is Lisa's option to purchase it in the fifth year?
It is already opt, we are already optioned to purchase it, so it will be ours after the fifth year.
All right.
That's it. Close that. Ed, anything else on budget?
No, not, not, not at this time. This will be on the agenda for every meeting anyway.
Yes. All right, next up, we have executive session minutes from January eighteenth, twenty eighteen. Someone make a motion to accept those? Anyone read those?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We accept the executive session meeting, uh, minute meeting, meeting minutes from Thursday, January eighteenth.
You get a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Bill, you'll set?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Yes.
We have the minutes from January eighteenth, twenty eighteen. You get a motion on those?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from January eighteenth.
We get a second?
All right, I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
This was the...
That was the meeting with Chief Lee.
Right.
A public meeting.
The, the one thing I didn't see here that I would have liked to see here was, um, when he accused the board in general of being, of accusing him of being dishonest, I specifically went after him and, and said that those words had never come out of my mouth and made him retract that, that I never called him dishonest or his intentions were dishonest, but that seems to be lacking here. I really would like that noted, that, um, I was vehemently opposed to his generalization, and that I made him recant that as far as I was concerned. And that's all.
Um, I, I don't know that I even put in that he made the first statement. I think both statements have been, where he recanted it, I think both statements have been removed completely.
Is that all right?
I just wanted for the record that I had never accused him of being dishonest in any way, shape, or form. That was all. So I guess if I can say to hear a public record, then I'm fine with it.
Yeah, I mean, I can certainly put it in if I just, um, like I said, I obviously, I, I had a note in my, in my minutes that, um, it had been recanted, so, um, I didn't include either statement in there. But I can certainly add it in if that's something you'd like.
Yeah, I thought it was a bold statement, and I wanted to make sure that that was, I was not part of that, and I didn't want to be generalized in that group, whatever group that he was inclined to speak of.
Okay. All those in favor? We have the minutes from January twenty...
I'm sorry. So are you, did you just approve them as is, or am I making changes to them?
Did you want that change added, or could I please? Would that be very difficult to do?
It wouldn't be difficult, but I would need to know where it goes, because we do not have a recording of that meeting, and I obviously, like I said, in my minutes, in my notes...
Might be edited.
So I did not articulate even the initial statement where you said that as a response. So I would just need to know where you would like that to appear in the minutes.
Uh, I think it would be right before I asked him about his job description and how he had, um, actually written the job description.
Okay.
So was that, um, this paragraph in between Chairman Wood stated he felt there should be, and Selectman O'Neill asked the chief, created a job description, please and thank you.
And please, what would you like it to say?
Uh, just to reflect the fact that, um, um, Chief Lee had made a generalization that the board had accused him of being dishonest, and that I had pointed out the fact that those words had never come out of my mouth, and that I would ask, I would like him to retract that general statement, to reflect that. I don't mind being quoted. I just don't like being misquoted.
I don't remember that either. I always take them out most.
I remember everything, especially when I'm accused of, you know what? If I said it, I'll stand, I'll own it. If I didn't say it, I don't want it. You can't put the toothpaste back in the tube, right?
It's hard to.
It's very hard to.
Do we have to revote on the, okay, so can I make, get a motion to vote on the adjusted minutes for the January eighteenth, twenty eighteen meeting?
Motion to approve Special Minutes meeting as amended, Special Min, uh, January eighteenth as amended.
You get a second?
Second.
All those in favor? You caught up, Denise? We have the minutes from January twenty-second, twenty eighteen.
Make a motion. We accept those.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
We have a pay change request from Robert Pillow, Pillow, Pillowzati?
Robert Polizotti.
Polizotti, from eleven dollars an hour to eighteen dollars an hour submitted by the cemetery commissioners.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the pay raise from eleven to eighteen dollars an hour for Robert Paula, uh, Polizotti, Robert, uh, Polizotti. We'll call him Robert.
We'll call him Robert.
I don't know if anybody's been up there, but he's, he's done a pretty good job. I was through there today. He's, he's got the place looking pretty decent. He's done a nice job. So, uh, I think the wages is definitely warranted, wage increase.
We get a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
I just had a couple of questions. I see one of the commissioners in front of us, but I can probably go through the chair and Denise, but, um, I know when, last time we had this conversation, they were gonna sit down and talk with him and all that. Obviously, he must be coming a full-time position just about.
No.
No. So basically, yeah, I shouldn't say full-time. I should say up to the hours, the twenty-nine or whatever hours?
Nineteen hours.
Okay.
He's still working his nineteen hours.
Oh, this is only gonna be for nineteen hours?
Correct. That's still what, he's still considered a part-time employee. So they just wanted to increase the hourly rate, given the additional work.
But as far as getting someone in the, in the cemetery that's gonna take some direction in there, have you heard anything on that at all?
Well, I think that's another discussion. I think that's separate from this.
Okay.
I can tell you when you review the budget request, um, they requested to increase the salary for the superintendent.
Okay.
So what I would say is, um, given that we don't have funds to increase that role between now and June thirtieth, something else will have to be done if this board and town meeting approves that salary increase.
On a permanent basis, you mean?
On a permanent basis, yeah. Not this one, the one of the superintendent.
Bill, do you have anything else? Are you, wait, Bill, are you done?
I'm good.
Bill?
Uh, this change will have no adverse effect on the overall budget of the cemetery?
No, so the, what's word in here is not accurate. Um, so they cannot take the funds out of the full-time line. What they can do is run the part-time line into a deficit, and we will transfer it to town meeting. They can't charge the part-time wages to the full-time superintendent's line, and I've already informed the chair of that.
But overall, at the end of the day, they won't exceed their...
No, they won't. They have plenty of funds to cover that.
And going forward into next year's budget, they've planned this new rate into their...
Again, I think that's a discussion you'll need to have with the cemetery commissioners in total.
Sure.
So that may change that budget number?
Correct. Well, I think this, and again, you know, you do have a commissioner here. This is because we currently do not have a superintendent at this time. He's doing more work than normal, a normal part-time laborer would do up there. So should we go back to a full-time superintendent, we may not need a laborer at this rate. I don't know. That's something that they'll have to decide how they want their staffing to work out.
So going through the chair, could we ask the chair to ask the chair of that, the cemetery, if they want to come in and talk to us and have that discussion, seeing we're going on a new budget season, we may have to change numbers and what have you? We should probably have that discussion sooner than later?
You could see the commissioner that's here has any input into this matter, since he is here and available.
Would you like to talk to us?
Yeah, if you'd like.
Sure.
As our last meeting that we had with you people, uh, we're looking into, um, coming up with a plan to, we probably need a full-time foreman and maybe a part-time, uh, person to help us out with some of the record-keeping. I talked with Jim Thornton today, and till we get somebody on board, he's helping us out tremendously in, in, um, going through the paperwork, because we're all pretty much rookies. This is all my second year, and Mike's first year, and Debbie's only in her third year. So there's a lot of things we're doing. Bobby Gupta's been, um, working with us and, and going over the different ways of how to make a, up a deed and everything, and I did find the papers that you asked for, so they're there, so we can make up the deeds the correct way, trying to string things out, um, according to Jim Thornton... According to Jim Thornton, um, it's, and a few years back, things just started going downhill. And as the Finance Director will attest to, we've been finding paperwork that shouldn't be where it is. And Bob's been, uh, Paul Azadi's been helping out quite a bit up there. He's, uh, as far as the maintenance part of it goes, he's really been great. He's cleaned up a lot of stuff, found a lot of stuff we don't need. We don't even know what it's there for, cleaning it up. We'd like to, my opinion, uh, would, I would like to increase his hours at some point in time. We have to go over it with the Finance Director, how we can do that the right way. He's more than willing to be up there. I think it'd be good if we could get him a few hours and then if we needed another person in the summertime like it's had before, the other person just do more. He's, he's great with, um, how we're supposed to do it. I know Eddie's been up there quite a few times going over things with him. And that's our idea, that's why we increased it because we don't think we're going to get anybody for, um, on a full-time basis to be a superintendent, uh, so to speak, because we've got a lot of job descriptions from other, other cemeteries that we're going over, trying to put something together that would fit the town is what we're looking at. You know, if we get a superintendent, it might be that the superintendent will also have to be out there doing the laboring work and everything else. We don't know, we can find somebody to do that, so.
I can tell you the last superintendent they had up there went out every day and did the work.
Rock, you can't hear you with a mic.
He got the mic.
They can't, they can't hear me, that's a first. Oh, I'm sorry.
So the last superintendent that was there, that's what he did, he was a working superintendent.
Yeah.
No, I'm not talking about recent, I'm talking about when I was up there.
Right, right. And then, but you had somebody from out of town that, uh, just worked part-time though.
He worked, he used to work for the Methuen Cemetery and then he left there and came here and he worked the whatever. Actually, in the beginning, he worked full-time and it could change because they didn't want to pay unemployment and et cetera, et cetera. So it could change because they didn't want to lay him off.
Denise, you had a comment?
Yeah, so Rock, I just wanted to, um, so some of the things you mentioned is not what is in your budget request. So if that's a new plan, the budget request that came in just a few weeks ago, which, um, stated that the only change you're looking for is a full-time superintendent and the salary is changed. There's no clerical in here, there's no change to the part-time laborer.
Well, we'll have to, we'll have to go over that because my, um, my thoughts that I, uh, well, we increased it, that we could try to split it up somehow between, but we'll, at our next meeting, I'll make sure that we clarify that as to how, which direction we want to go.
Yeah, because if this is going to change, we need to know as soon as possible because this is what we've based our assumptions on, is what you guys have submitted.
Right, I don't know, I don't think the money will change. I just think how we split it up might change.
That's fine, as long as the bottom line doesn't change, then if it, if you're planning to recommend something other than what was submitted, I need to know as soon as possible.
Definitely. And Mr. O'Neil, another thing, as an elected official here, I, um, I take a little bit of offense at how you brought forth how some people didn't completely do their budget. There are reasons that maybe a budget gets spent a little bit at the end of the year to keep, to maintain monies in case we have a, an issue, especially maybe the fire department. Where a fire department is based on apparatus and equipment. I never spent my budget, all of it, to make sure that I always had money. So in case I had a catastrophic ending, one of the trucks, I had money to, to fill it. And that's why a lot of people looked at that and they're trying to be, you know, look, looking after the budget. And that's why sometimes some of these people will spend it at the end of the year. I don't think they're, they're doing it to, um, any, anything other than trying to maintain.
No, I think what, what Bill was talking about was that when we asked some budgets to give some of the money back that they didn't need at the end of the year, they in turn turned around and just spent it on stuff that wasn't absolutely necessary.
Well, then that's something you have to look at.
That's what you're referring to?
I can understand that, but I, I just think the verbiage used, I, it's a little offensive, that's all.
Well, I, 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 I guess I meant to offend some people because what they did was wrong. Now, in the case of what you're saying, that's not, this is not what began the discussion. What began the discussion was there were departments that blatantly and irresponsibly went out and spent every last dime of their appropriation just to spend it.
Right.
Not because they had to, not because it was necessary, just because that, it, it's the old adage, and you've been in business, I bet. You're given a thousand-dollar budget and if you only spend five hundred of it, what happens? Management cuts your budget back to five hundred because they said you didn't need it. So most people will spend right up to their budget so they can get ten percent more next year so they can play a little more, right? This was directed directly at departments and, and, and that knew they didn't need it and spent it anyways.
Okay. Well, that, then, those are the people you should bring in and talk to and not just make a general, you know.
Well, I wasn't, I'm trying to get specific.
Yeah.
I, I, I want names of the departments so that we can specifically focus that attention on those folks that are mismanaging our money and not the folks like the fire department or the, or the police department that, you know, are holding on to it because a service vehicle may break down, you don't know. That's, that's a completely different subject and I get that. You, you, you want to hold on to a little in case.
Right.
This is, this is beyond that, Rock, it really is. If, if I thought what you were saying, I wouldn't have brought it up. But I know it's, it's strictly, it was just, um-
A knee-jerk reaction.
No, spiteful what they did.
Well, that's, that's your job. I just, you know, uh, wanted to make sure that, um, on, like I said, certain, certain different groups have to hold on to their money a little bit longer just in case of that.
And that's completely understood.
All right.
But there's certain other groups that, that didn't. They didn't have any need for the rest of that money in that fiscal year, but they went ahead and spent it anyways, just for the sake of doing it. And that's wrong. It's your money, it's my money, it's, it's all our money. And every dollar we can save, Rock, right, helps us all.
Oh, I understand that. And I will, the next meeting we have with the Cemetery Commissioner, we'll make sure that we can meet with you guys and go over that and we'll have to meet with you too on those other things, see what we could do. I don't know, there's a lot we can do. Personally, I, I was hoping we could like move the person we have in there now, call it an upgrade, you know? Like some places, you know, you work as an apprentice for a while, then you get moved up to a full-time job. I don't know if that's something we could do, how we'd go about it. I don't want to lose this guy, he's really willing to do it.
Well, when you come in and give us some options, you know, and some suggestions and recommendations.
That's what we got to find out. I don't know all the, you know.
Right, I mean, I would say as long as at the end of the day you have one full-time employee and one part-time employee, how you choose to split that up would be, you know, we have one benefit-eligible employee at the cemetery. How you choose to split that up and who you decide to make that, but the minute you make that position over nineteen hours, it becomes benefit-eligible.
Right.
So if that's your primary position as a, you know, foreman laborer, that, and then you don't want a full-time superintendent and if you're looking for clerical support, that's not full-time, that would be fine, but the minute you try and add a second benefit-eligible position, obviously it's going to add additional cost to the town.
Oh, yes, no, I understand that.
Okay. Thank you, Rock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, next up we have-
No, no, he didn't vote on that, you have a motion in a second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
We got off track, we got off track a little bit there. Next up, we have drug and alcohol testing policy and program.
So this is one of those things that I've talked to you guys about that we received, I applied for and received a fifteen thousand dollar grant from the state to update our, um, policies. This was the first one we've tackled because our existing policy was so outdated. So this was, um, actually I took this from another city and then sent it to council who made their recommended changes and recommended that the board approve this policy. It clearly identifies what's prohibited, what the consequences are, so that there's no question when someone has a first offense, a second offense, et cetera, what the situation is. Currently, the personnel policy, as you all know, which is outdated, calls for like a thirty-day suspension on a first offense. You can't do that anymore in this day and age, so, um, so this actually-
That's a drastic change, right?
It is. So this actually clearly identifies, um, what the policy is. If this is approved, it will be sent out to all employees. They will sign off and it will go in their file that they have received and understand our drug and alcohol testing policy and program.
Anybody want to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, accept this drug and alcohol testing policy and program.
We get a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Bill?
Yeah, I read it extensively, I, I like the verbiage. It's succinct, it's to the point, it's very clear in the steps. The only thing I'd like to see more of though is, um, even a mandatory rehabilitation after the first offense. I mean, do we have to wait for the second offense?
Well, you're looking at the alcohol section.
Either way.
With the, well, it, it's technically a little bit different. I mean, we certainly can require it if you'd like on the first offense. Most of what we go by for our criteria falls under the DOT because our employees with a CDL license are subject to random testing anyways. So a lot of this, specifically the EAP, the Substance Abuse Evaluation, falls right under the DOT guidelines. So, um, we certainly can add that to the first offense for alcohol if you would like. I have no problem either way on that.
The only thing is, most of the illegal drugs will, will leave your system within twenty-four hours. They won't be detectable.
Not so much anymore, actually, that's not the case.
I mean, that's why some of the Olympic athletes got caught.
Even with marijuana that supposedly is gone, it doesn't leave with the-
You know, it's in your hair follicles, it's only, you can still test for it weeks after.
I've become very versed on, uh, some of these matters because it has applied to situations here, which is one of the reasons why we wanted to formalize a policy so that everyone is treated fairly, everyone is treated the same and there's no question what would happen to someone if in fact they are caught violating one of these.
It's just that alcohol addiction is much more prevalent in society and much more long-lasting than some of these others. Most of them end up in death, that's why they don't last as long, unfortunately. So it'd be nice to get some of these folks in alcohol treatment centers, you know, as soon as you could, just to get them some help and, and try to, you know, get them to see the, the, the right way.
I mean, we, we could, we could require a, um, you know, mandatory call with the EAP program to decide further. A substance abuse, um, program or rehabilitation is required. You know, a lot of times just on that first discussion, people can determine if it is a one-time thing or if it seems to be more of a habitual act.
Alcoholism is very seldom a one-time thing.
So are you asking for an amendment or? I'm okay with the way it's written. Bill?
I'm okay with the way it's written.
Ed?
Yes, it seems to, uh, I'll, I'll, I go along with that. It seems to be sufficient as it's written.
It's very detailed.
I mean, we could certainly, you know, if that's something, I, I can honestly tell you, since I've been here, we have not had anyone under the alcohol policy that has tested positive or had any indication of an issue.
No, it's a good thing.
So, I mean, I can, if it becomes an issue, if we see that there's issues with it, we could certainly look to revise that or revise it on an annual basis.
Good.
All right, so we have a second, all in favor?
Yes.
We have accepted resignation of Rhonda Caducee from the Board of Registars. We get a motion for that?
I'll make a motion that we accept the resignation of Rhonda Caducee from the Board of Registars.
We get a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Next up, we have old business. Ed, we'll start with you.
Uh, I don't have anything.
Bill done?
Um, no, not, I mean, I do have one thing that's just kind of over and over. We're talking about budgets and trying to get money. How are we doing in any of the land sales? Anything, you have any time?
Not since you and I spoke on Friday.
Is that it?
That's it.
Bill?
Uh, I got a few things. It's early. V C Park insurance issues, have we, have we made any headway with, with any of that? Be nice if they could sell fund, hopefully all, all of it.
Uh, no. The matter still remains that if they have additional funds at the end of the year, we will speak and they'll see what they can pay for. When you go through the budget, you will see when you get to the insurance section, I actually wrote right in there, um, are we covering V C? Because I don't know if we're increasing the budget. I did increase it by the amount. But I think even the, I think even what I've requested is going to be low because our liability insurance on other matters is, just keeps increasing. So I have that in there as an unknown, if we are going to cover that at the full amount going forward.
So we're still subsidizing that to a certain extent at town?
We are covering the whole insurance policy at this point, yes.
Any plans to try and fix that gap?
I think, again, they plan to if they have funds at the end of the year. I think the last time, although that was before they had another issue, I think the last time Mike and I spoke about it, he was expecting to have some funds available to be able to possibly cover one of the months of the agreement.
How much is the money they need to come up with?
It's about fifteen, fourteen thousand.
Oh, wow. I was going to say they could maybe do something up there to raise money for it, like have a special day to raise money for it, but I don't think you're going to raise fourteen thousand in one day.
I better go fund me. Try anything. I understand now we have a personal bylaw committee.
They are meeting as we speak.
Oh, that's the next question, so they're already meeting, okay, excellent. This goes back a little ways, but I had nothing to do one day, so I was looking over some old notes. Storm manage, stormwater management program plan, that was about fifty-three grand a year and it was kind of, eh, is that still moving forward at that current rate?
Probably not at the current rate. Bob, Eric, Ian and I have a meeting with the engineer in the next few weeks. You may recall that we were supposed to go live with the MS four permit last July. The state of Massachusetts granted a waiver to postpone that for one year to take effect this coming July first, twenty eighteen, when New Hampshire's stormwater permit went into effect. So it hasn't gone away, it's just delayed some of the items. So we started to do some of the engineering with the initial funds. I don't think for year two, we will need the same amount of money that we originally anticipated because I think everything's going to be pushed back a year. But that's what we're, we're going to meet and find out really what our obligation is now, now that the timeline has changed.
Okay. Am I to keep going?
No, go ahead.
Uh, we talked about repurposing the old water building. Is, is we, any movement on that, any?
No, I talked to him today because-
I saw Tom go by there today.
Yeah, so we are, I mean, I, I will continue to reiterate, we are in desperate need of storage. That is an ideal location to move files. They are working now on Twenty-three School Street. They are expecting to be able to, they're hoping to be in there by the fall, at which point then they will be vacated from the Washington Street Building. I started, we started to get into a conversation, but then I had someone come to my office, so I have to finish that with him. The hope would be that come like July first or, you know, around sort of the end of the summer, we could start utilizing some space. Mike and I talked about moving the summer programs, materials there and taking it out of Bagnell. Apparently, it's been a growing issue at Bagnell to store their equipment there. That would be an ideal location where it's climate-controlled, as well as start to move some of the boxes. You'll see in, when you read the town clerk's letter, you know, storage is a major issue. We've now, we're now at capacity with our back new storage room. The town accountant's office is piled with boxes. There's just no place to put things. So the sooner we can start moving stuff, again, to me, that's the ideal location because it's already climate-controlled. We don't need to access it that often. But the sooner we can start moving some of those things, the better it would be here, really for every single department, because every department needs storage.
What, what needs to be done there in order to make it usable?
Nothing, I mean, they're using it right now for offices and, um, they have relatively new roof. They do have to move stuff out, so they do have materials in there. They have a laboratory in there. So, you know, it may be that if there's some space we can occupy until they are fully moved out. moved out, and I will follow up that conversation with him because we just got interrupted. But right now, they're planning fall to be in their new location.
Excellent. Washington Hall annual reports. I have a note here from November of 2016, and forgive me if I missed them, but have we got any of those annual reports?
No. Is that in relation to their lease agreement?
I just have some notes about Washington Hall annual reports, and...
It might be the lease. We did require new reporting with the last lease, and I haven't gotten anything, so I'll pull that and look. What date did you get that as?
I had November 2016.
So, that was probably when they renewed their lease.
Something, a couple of...
Yeah, and I do know we added a new section that wasn't in there before about either reporting to the board or providing documentation, and I haven't seen anything, so I will follow up on that.
Okay, I'm just trying to tie up a little loose ends to make it all go away. And one comment, maybe it's old business, I don't know, maybe it's... The trash and recycle. Maybe all of you have noticed, if it's a bad day, bad weather, the trash gets picked up for some reason, but the recycle doesn't sometimes.
So...
Do we know why that one truck can make it and the other one can't?
Yes.
And I know the last storm, they did a good job. They didn't pick it up at my house on the scheduled day, but they picked it up the next day or the day after. But I've seen in some times, and I think you've all noticed it, it might linger for a week. It just hangs out there for a week.
I think there was only one instance of that that might come close to that.
Right, so it should never linger for a week. The tough day for them is Wednesdays. So, the Wednesday trash route is the busiest route, and when it's super cold or when there's a storm or something like that, they cannot accommodate everything with the one truck. So, they make trash a priority. So, right now, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, they are using the one co-mingled truck, that there's a separate spot for recycling and a separate spot for trash. So, they can pick up both at the same stop with the same vehicle. They can't do that on Wednesdays because the route is so large. So, I've been speaking with waste management about looking at the routes to see if they can distribute some of Wednesday's pickup to Tuesday and Thursday to then go back to using that one truck, because the fact that they need two, it's just too difficult to get all of the recycling because they have to have the crew come back with the recycling truck. So, on certain days, it happened, I think it was either last Wednesday or the Wednesday, whatever. A recent Wednesday that we had snow, and he emailed me and said, "We'll pick it up after our route tomorrow when we're back to the one truck." But it's Wednesday is the problem for them right now.
Yeah, they can take some of that load off of Wednesday and disperse it to Tuesday or Thursday or whatever, then that'll make it...
Right, right. So, we're looking at the map list and the route list right now to see what they can sort of adjust a little bit to then make it be that they have the one truck, the same truck each day, and then they won't have those issues. But right now, Wednesday is just too...
I'm assuming if that does happen, there'll be some kind of notice sent out to those households, and the trash day for them will change.
Yes.
Can I make a request to share my trash day we changed at Thursday?
You can request it. I don't know if it's going to happen.
So, are you a Wednesday trash?
Yes, I am. And I think it's happened more than once to me.
Well, like I said, it wouldn't surprise me because Wednesday is very difficult for them to get everything, but they have been back out on Thursday to make sure they get it.
Yeah, it's just a pain because I see my neighbor schlep this stuff out and then schlep it back in the house and then schlep it back out to the, you know...
We are looking to adjust that.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Yeah, yes.
All right, next up, we have selectmen reports. Ed, we'll start with you. Anything on that?
I don't have anything.
Bill? No? What's that?
Well, I mean, I don't know if the town...
Yeah, probably.
Okay. I was going to do it on the selectman time. All right, so, I went over and I spent an hour and a half on Saturday with Joe Anderson in the selectmen in West Newbury. And he's very helpful. He was very accommodating. He'll give us whatever we need if we need something for email, et cetera, et cetera. So, I took a bunch of notes. He gave me a bunch of paperwork. I'll kind of not bore you guys totally, but it's a two-year process for them.
I'm sorry, I would just recommend, Phil and Ed were not here at the last meeting. You might want to actually talk about what you met with him about.
Oh, okay.
I don't know that they know.
I'll go up to speed on it.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so, I met with him on a town... Making the town manager have a town manager. The process. So, it was a two-year process for them, and one of the reasons it was a two-year process is because it took them almost six months to get it through the legislation because they didn't have a good representation on that end of it. If you had someone that you were friendly with or whatever, would help you get it through, it could go faster. Anyway, so I took some notes. I'll go through the notes, and then I'm going to kind of go through the paperwork real quick. So, one thing that West Newbury has, and it made the process a lot better and easier, and it saves them a lot of money, is they have an in-house counsel. They actually have an in-house counsel there, which keeps their counsel bills down, and it moves their process quicker. So, keeping that in mind...
Do you know what that budget is for that?
I didn't ask it.
The town clerk.
What's that?
The town clerk and adult over town.
Okay. West Newbury used the special act, not the charter, because they had lost their financial director. They needed to go and get this done quicker. They thought it was going to be quicker. Their in-house lawyer drafted up the litigation, which I... They gave me a copy of the litigation to put forward to the state. What they did is they hired a lady, which Mr. Anderson worked with this girl, and they paid her money. They paid her approximately $500 to do a lot of the legwork because they're not full-time, et cetera, et cetera. And he had said that they gave her... They kind of met and what have you, and she kind of put the process on paper and et cetera, et cetera. He didn't get deeply into what she did, but they paid her about $500. He did say, "There's companies out there that will do this process for you. It's around $5,000." They didn't want to spend the $5,000. He said he took this on as his little thing. There's another selectman in town that took the schools on, and there's another selectman in town that took another project on. All three of them kind of delegate what they do. They get along well. It works. It worked for them. They developed five small groups when it came time. The five small groups sat down, and they brought questions before the selectmen. They went out and they questioned people in town when they use flyer... Flyers, website. They used email to the town people that had emails throughout the town. They left little flyers with surveys at town hall offices to be picked up in stores, et cetera. They used Twitter, Facebook, and again, they handed out flyers in like stores. And it was questionnaires in the beginning. "Do you want a town manager?" And the questionnaire is here. And they did that process, and it took them a little bit of time. They got the questionnaire, and they turned around, and they grafted it. When they grafted it, the biggest reason people wanted a town manager was because of communications. Communication was their biggest and sole reason, starting and when the people walked through the front door of town hall, they wanted it changed. And when they went through their process, they looked at it saying, "Okay, how do we take communication into town manager, and we improve town hall?" So, as they moved forward, it came down to... The selectmen met on three different Saturdays. They looked at all the paperwork that was being processed through. They narrowed it down to candidates. Thirty-seven people applied. They narrowed it down to like, I think it was six or whatever. They sat down and ultimately met with the six candidates, and they narrowed it to three and on and on, and they finally came up with someone. The... They... Okay. One of their... On their committees, one of the... They had their groups. They requested CEOs, one selectman, business owners on those committees. So, they actually wanted to handpick people, like lawyers or whatever. They wanted to handpick people for the five members on those committees, and they were involved in that. I said they met on three different Saturdays. One of the big things they did is in getting a town manager, they actually changed, as I just said, from the front door in. When you walk in the front door come June in West Newbury, you're going to be meeting with a person at the front door in an office, and that person is now called a town manager, administrator, don't quote me, it's... It has a... The person has a name. That person now will greet the people. The people on the second floor aren't there all the time, and that's like different kind of conservation or whatever. They're not always there. So, they don't get the answers, and people get aggravated. The town people, their communication problem, they get aggravated. So, this person now, right down to the point where they have their fields on a computer, she's going to sit there, and they're going to plug into the computer. The girl comes in and says, "I want to have a field day, blah, blah, blah." She'll plug it in, and then that information will go to whoever deals with it down the road. Let's say someone comes in and wants to have the selectman's office. That person will deal with it. So, it starts at the front door, and it went right down to the clerk's office. They changed the description of their clerk, what the clerk does. They changed the description of a lot of departments. In the process of doing that, they got a lot of kickback. In the initial beginning, they got kickback from the people in town hall. They actually met with them on Saturdays. They brought the people in on Saturday, sat down with all the department heads, and said, "This is what we're going to do." They got a lot of kickback. But as the process went forward, they talked it out, and the kickback got less and less because they... People could get a better idea how it was going to work, and it was going to actually make things smoother. And someone that was overworked and had a lot of... Too much on their plate, that job was kind of defined in that person. They hired, took on different roles, became a floater in different departments, et cetera, et cetera. So, it kind of... They got the picture of it, and it kind of smoothed things out. They said the process cost around $2,500. That's the $500 for the girl and around $2,000 other expenses. The town manager, it was $168,000. $145 to the town manager, and how they arrived at it, they took the towns in this area... There's only three towns in this area left that have not got a town manager. Groveland, West Newbury, Merrimack. In three towns in the central part of the state, which are very small towns, smaller than we are, they haven't done it, but they are looking at it. So, we are basically in that minority that we have not gone to this process. So, what they did is they had this girl go out and do a survey and said, "Listen, we want a number for our town manager. How do I arrive at it?" So, she did her due diligence, and she found out what they're paying for an administrator and a manager, and on and on and on. They used the... How many people live in the town, the tax, did it all. They arrived at $145,000 for town manager, and the reason it went to $168 is they had to turn around. As I said, they changed their inner town hall. They had a building office. They changed the little... The infrastructure. Each select person in the town actually has a desk. They actually have a desk, and their paperwork, they can come in on, say, Monday, they go to their desk. If they want to work there for three hours, they work there for three hours. So, they actually changed their infrastructure in the building walls, actually, and things. So, the money, they had to spend a little money. How they arrived at the $168,000 for the first year, because they... As I said, they went to that special act. They turned around and used their free cash for the first year to fund the project. And then the second year, they're going to budget into their budget and what have you. They said that the... I talked about they didn't like to change. Town people wanted communication. One of the problems that people didn't like, they didn't have trust in their government 100%. They had about a 50%... When they did the poll, 50% trust in their government. The town employees were not doing their actual jobs, and they were... Government takes too long, too sluggish, too slow. Boards elected... Boards and elected boards and appointed boards needed to be changed. Very confusing on the role between elected board and a appointed board and, you know, how far can you push them and how far can you... As the selectmen can't say certain things to them. So, that's... In their survey, they said, "We want to change that. We don't want it anymore." The town offices not always accessible, and that was one of their... That was like 70% they complained about. The town manager can handle daily problems more directly. And the one thing is that as the selectmen sat down, they said, "We do not want the people going directly to our town manager. We pay good money." Even with their financial director, they said, "We wasted too much money on our financial director to have people go in there and waste at their desk. We need to have a point person, and that point person will then finger off and feed out all the problems to different people, and they'll talk about it." The town manager will simplify the layers of the government. I'll just make it real quick. What he gave me was he gave me that they're actually transitioning, how they transitioned. In the beginning, he gave me moving West Newbury forward. This is their questionnaire and all their different surveys they took. But for one thing, and I'll let it go at this, because I'm probably... One thing is, their current structure right now in West Newbury is pretty... You can't see on TV, but it's pretty broad, and it's pretty confusing if you take start at the selectman's office and all the different things the selectman needed to do and what have you. So, what they did is they come up with a new structure, and I'll simplify it down. The selectmen answer to only the moderator, the housing authority, the parks and recs, the constables, the library trustees, the water commissioners, the planning board, board assessors, and the health board. But as you go down the line, appointed boards and committee will be handled by the selectmen. The town manager now is responsible for this. The town manager is responsible for the council, town clerk, conservation, EMA director that would be fired here, CEO director, building inspector, town accountant, treasurer and collector, executive administrator, DPW director, the police department, the library, the water department, the planning board, chief assessors, health agent. And he will also, hand in hand, work back with the selectmen, and he will deal with the library trustees, the water commissioners, the planning board, board of assessors, board of health, the moderator, the housing, the parks, recs, and constable. So, he is on... He is in that layer where he or she, I shouldn't be saying he or she, they hired a he, but he's taken some of the work off of the selectmen, so now the selectman can go out and do things like one selectman now is dealing with the school, high school. He can devote his time to that project. This certain selectman devoted his time to change their government. He's almost done with it come June, and he'll take on another role. So...
And they don't have to wait two weeks for a meeting to come and have something taken care of?
Nope. And he said... He said that now going through this process, it's actually going to come in line. They hired this person. The person can't stop for, I think he said, five months. It's in June he starts. And now that the offices are being rebuilt, they're moving things around, the people in the town hall are on line with it. And he said, "When we sat down with the selectmen and the different town offices and explained how we're going to do it, they were more happy." We sat down with boards and committees, one... And had them come in, we explained what we're going to do. They were happy. The biggest thing were appointed versus elected was the biggest fight. And it was a fight, he said, but he said, "We kept going at it. We go and went at it, and we went at it, and we were able to get it done." So, it's a process, but I don't know, you know, where you guys want to go with it or whatever, but, you know...
That was good. Lot of information.
Yeah, and he was very, very knowledgeable, and he emphasized, you know, "Anytime your finance director or your chairman or you or whatever want to call me, anything you want, any paperwork you want, just get a hold of me." So...
No.
I don't know if you... If you guys are in favor of this and you want to have an executive session, we have to have an executive session to talk about... To start the process. I don't know how you go about it.
It wouldn't fall under executive session.
No, it wouldn't. Okay.
You could add it to as an agenda item if you'd like.
Yeah, we could make it an agenda item, though.
Yep.
So, we can see about doing that for the next one day.
Yeah.
Time right now. Okay, that's a lot of information. Thank you.
Okay.
Ed, did you have, did I already ask you anything for-
Yes, you did, I didn't have anything.
Did I ask you?
Nope.
Yeah, we, we had a joint, the high school building committee and the school committee had a joint meeting last Tuesday where we basically had to choose from 10 different design models and parse that down to four. Two were basically mandated by the state, required that we look at them and the other two, ones that we went with were a combined high school, middle school, one with a two-floor and one with a three-floor concept. Lot of rest is still contingent upon this little detention pond, I gotta say it right because it gets a lot of trouble.
Retention?
Retentions.
Retention, detention, I don't know.
Is that where they send the kids for detention now?
To the pond. That little-
That's awful.
That little, I'm not even gonna call it a pond, that little spot of water in between the two schools out in front, that is a, right now, a little stumbling block on, they don't know what exactly they can do with that and-
Do you know what it does?
No, and neither does anybody else.
Is it a drainage?
And that's, that's the $64,000 question right now, would they have EPA studies in conservation and exactly what they can and cannot do with that little piece? Because depending on that, that reconfigures a lot of other things in the design. But we've gotten a lot of tremendously good feedback on the enthusiasm in the towns. I know I've spoken to a lot of people at my son's games who, they're not only from Groveland but from West Newbury and Merrimack and they seem to be very excited about the project. A lot of them have gone to the, I should say, open houses or presentations to see what they've done so far and it seems to be moving along quite smoothly. And it's actually quite impressive, the stage we're at now with the four design models to submit to the state and hopefully get some feedback from that pretty soon. And that'll be a town meeting shortly. Coming up to a town near you.
Yes, fall, November likely after the state election. So the state election is like November 7?
Mm-hmm.
6? I mean, it's November 6. So they're, right now, they're thinking it will not be in time for the 6th, it will have to be, we will need a town meeting and a special election in the month of November, after November 6th is what they're planning on. But we'll know more once, you know, MSBA has to review the four. I believe they said we have to now take these with the architect and the OPM and fully spec out and cost out these four options. And just so you're aware, the four, so one of them is a new high school only, one of them is renovations to the new high school only, and then two are the combined middle high school. The first two, as Bill said, we are required to present those proposals to the MSBA. So we continue to meet every month, sometimes more, and then we'll be going through, once they actually cost out, we'll actually look at the difference in cost and the difference to students, I guess it really does make a difference when you go from two floors to three floors when it comes to natural light and things like that. So we will start evaluating all of those things over the next few months.
As well as future expansion possibilities. I think that, if I recall, most of that has to be done by 18th of March, or that's when we're getting-
Has to be submitted.
We're getting some feedback back, so next meeting or two, we should have much more information on, you know, what's transpired.
Okay.
We'll be happy to share that with you.
Good. Next up we have correspondence, we have executive session minutes from February 5th, 2018. We have the minutes from February 5th, 2018. We have executive session minutes from February 12th, 2018. We have letter from the finance board regarding the elected position of road commissioner.
May I just pause a minute for a minute? So you will see that the finance board wrote a letter and identified three specific points for which they're making their recommendation. They are recommending to you that the board put on the town meeting warrant, an article to change the road commissioner from elected to an appointed highway superintendent. This comes with the full support of our current road commissioner. He does not plan to seek a new term when his expires next May of 2019. He wants to ensure that the budget, the department, the equipment, et cetera, is left with in capable hands. So if you all, you can certainly request to add it on a future agenda if you'd like, but this is what they're asking for, they're asking for a warrant article. If you will choose that, it will also need to be in the ballot, so this requires a ballot question as well.
All right, let's try and get that on the next agenda. Then we have Nichols Village Expansion Project, letter and summary, full plans are available in the office.
Yes, so I actually have the full plans here, they were just too big for me to try and scan and send them off to you. So this is for their expansion project, it is before the planning board, they have stormwater management and land disturbance permit, but in our subdivision and zoning requirements it asks if the board of selectmen have any feedback or comments, so I have them if you'd like to look at them, so.
Okay. Next up we have finance director's time.
I just have one quick statement, I would just like to offer my sincere condolences to Deb Ketchinaw, health agent, on the tragic loss of one of her family members yesterday. Our thoughts and prayers go to you and your family.
Thank you. Next up we have selectmen's time. Bill O'Neil?
I just want to echo Denise's sentiments, it's a tragic loss and my heart goes out to you and your family at this time. Volunteer of the Month, where are they?
I do actually have one that has to come before the board.
All right.
So that will be on your next agenda to vote on.
Great, I thought there was dying there, we needed to resurrect that, right Mike? Come on, get out there and get that ball rolling. Let me see, turn it over again, that might be it. 25:45, I'm good. Great.
Bill done?
I would like to know if, and we can talk about it at a later date for another agenda item, but I would like to know if this board has the stomach for turning around and trying to get a group together to possibly promote business or business ideas and grow them, maybe a small group of people or what have you, and even help our business. I know I've been working in Amesbury a lot and Amesbury, they do, they're very, very business pro over there and I've watched how they're going about it and they, they're always doing something to help their businesses and what have you and the town has a lot going on, they have a lot of extra money to spend to do good things in the town and what have you. I think that it's time that it would also help us offset our taxes hopefully too, if possible, so if you want to maybe put on for an agenda.
Long time coming.
If we can do something like that.
So like a volunteer committee to ideas on how to bring business to town, is that what you mean?
Yeah, or they can go out and solicit, you know, people, or they can sit down and come up with some ideas, how to bring it in or what we can do to help improve the businesses we have here to get them to-
You're looking primarily, some people from the business community that-
Right.
That can give you ideas and maybe problems that they've had in trying to bring a business into the town of Groveland.
Right.
Like almost start our own little chamber of commerce.
Right.
That reaches out to businesses and-
Business Development Committee.
That's how them, that's one of the things that they've done over there, they have a good core group of people and what's that thing that I talked to you about, they just voted.
Oh, for the-
Town manager?
No, the town rebuild-
Revolution.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that's gonna bring, they're up to, I think, three now maybe? That's gonna bring the business people $500,000 if, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think if they win it, what happens is I think their businesses all become on TV or media or something like that.
Yeah, so they named one of five in the state, in the country for revolutionary communities with regards to business and like visioning or something like that.
Yeah.
They've now made the top three, voting is still eligible. And yes, it has to do with the TV component. Merrimack Valley Planning has been very supportive of it, encouraging all of the communities to vote. Amesbury is the only community on the entire East Coast that made the top five of this.
And one thing that they did a few months ago, I was actually running over to Columbia to get something and I saw all these movie trucks and I'm like, "What's going on?", you know what I mean? So I actually asked the guy in Columbia, I said, "What's going on?", he goes, "The business group applied for a piece of a movie to be shot downtown today and they were shooting at the old theater, there was an old theater down there? They were shooting that piece in the old theater."
I put us on the list.
And they got some, they got some money, they got some money for doing it.
Yeah, I put us on the mass film list, I met with them through Merrimack Valley Planning and, you know, you can just sort of register the town and if there's opportunities, but again, unfortunately, we don't have as much to offer, we don't have a big business area, we don't have a lot of vacant buildings that people like to film in, but I said, "Well, in case you ever need some rural communities in Massachusetts, come on out." So we're on there.
Any response to any of it?
You've got to sell our great Boston accent and our great-
Hey, I have tried, I've taken Mass Office of Business Development, I've taken them on drive-throughs of town, I've worked with them, we've reached out to people. Unfortunately, I think a lot of it comes down to our zoning. The areas in town that are business available are not the most ideal, our infrastructure, we lack water and sewer in a lot of those areas. You know, the state has offered to do whatever they can to help us, they talked about working with the town to build sort of a prospectus for potential businesses. Again, it comes down to where they, where we have a town to allow businesses to go just isn't as appetizing as other areas in town. So maybe this group could look at the zoning and maybe look at, you know, maybe making more of a defined downtown development area with, you know, businesses or something like that, maybe you could attract some smaller businesses in there.
An excellent idea, we'll put that on the agenda.
Yeah, we'll see if we can get that on-
Yep.
The next one, other one after that.
Now, this business development thing you're talking about, Bill, is this like open everything or do we have certain restrictions? I know we don't like all cash businesses and stuff, so-
No, no, no.
I mean, is that we just open for business?
Anything, anything that can, anything that would bring business in and help grow them with taxes and what have you, yeah.
And jobs?
Yep, jobs, bring people into work. And now, you know what Denise is saying, she's saying like, we do, it's, we're limited, but on the same token, we've got to figure a way of getting around that somehow.
Right, and-
We could do better.
And there are loans available, I mean, again, Mass Office of Business Development, there are small business loans that they could be handed out for people to come in. Again, it's, we need to be more appealing and we need to sort of highlight some of the areas in town that we have available to attract people.
Like a highly educated populace?
Well, even if you took your, even if you took the rail trail that's coming supposedly, whenever it comes, if you took the rail trail and you have this business group in place like they do in Davis, they turn around and got on the state and said, "Listen, we want to make Davis a stop every two, three months." And they have vendors come and they have all kinds of people come and they come down and they have like fruits and vegetables or whatever, they bring in their different products, but it also brings revenue into the town as well because the town gets a little bit of money back from that when they come in. So there's a bunch of different ways, you've just got to get a bunch of entrepreneurs at a table that can come up with some good ideas and I'm sure we can do it, you know, we don't have that.
I can't believe VC Park isn't sought after by the film business. Mike, here's your opportunity, market that. You got some holes to fill, it's a great location, right?
You know who it's sought after?
We'll take that too. But hey, the film industry, get Bobby D. up there at VC Park, do some films, you can make some money, this is a win-win for everybody, Mike. Leverage that, come on.
Ed, anything for selectman time?
Uh, no.
All right, can we get a motion to adjourn at 8:10?
Motion to adjourn at 8:10.
All those in favor?
Yes.